Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this public meeting to order. I also would like to introduce to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance Chris Nicholas, who is currently serving as the Vice Commander of the American Legion Post 121 in Scranton. Chris served in the U.S. Army for 22 years from 1989 to 2012. He served in the Persian Gulf War, the Stabilization Forces in Bosnia, and in Operation Iraqi Freedom, and retired as a Medical Staff Sergeant from the United States Army, and he currently lives in Scranton. We're happy to have him here this morning.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last Commissioners' meeting.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the Board on agenda items only. Okay, seeing that there is no one, Resolution 25-0157.
This is approving the current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the filing payables. Lackawanna County's general fund, numbers 386843-387801, inclusive totaling $3,654,398.95. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $3,945,290.91. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 18, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0146.
This is adopting an investment policy. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby adopt an investment policy that set forth guidelines for funds invested through depository relationships. The county, through a cooperative effort between the Treasury and the Revenue and Finance Department, has advanced an effort to maximize interest earnings on all county funds in deposit. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 18, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Chief Financial Officer of Lackawanna County, Mr. David Bolzoni.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
The policy issues were material to recent credit downgrades. The initial downgrade cited inadequate or nonexistent policies, including debt management, fund balance, and investment policies. This critique has been fully remedied with the recommendation of this adoption of the investment policy. The fund balance policy was updated, and a debt management policy was adopted in 2024, thereby fulfilling those recommendations of standard and pores. The investment policy offers an overview of the responsible use of funds. It creates objectives for the use of funds and identifies the responsibilities of managing investment protocol. Practices had been in place regarding collateralization and permitted investments, relatively standard, but these practices really had not been documented. This investment policy now documents these practices and memorializes the responsibilities of investment management.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bolzoni? Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, on the question, today marks another very important step forward for Lackawanna County with the passage of this investment policy. This policy is a responsible and necessary move that will help guide how we manage and invest public funds, ensuring they are handled with transparency, accountability, and in the best interest of taxpayers. As Mr. Bolzoni alluded to, having a formal investment policy is not just good financial practice, it's also a very important signal to credit rating agencies and outside institutions that Lackawanna County is serious about improving its fiscal health and long-term stability. Mr. Bolzoni also referenced the fact that we have passed since last year a fund balance policy and a debt management policy, and all these things are extremely important. So this policy provides structure and oversight, reduces risk, and helps ensure we are earning the best possible return on the county's funds in a safe and prudent manner. At a time when the finances, we're still not out of the woods yet, and the finances continue to be tight, every penny counts, and we work to restore confidence in county government, it's another sign of real progress. Another sign of this progress is the credit rating agencies, they give the county an outlook every year. It can either be positive, negative, or stable. For the last 10 or so years, I think, it's been negative for a lot of different reasons. For the first time in recent memory, it is stable. So because of the investment policy and other moves that we've made over the last year, I really feel like we have at least stabilized things to the point where our hair is not on fire. As I said, we have a long, long way to go. We are not out of the woods yet by any stretch of the imagination, but we have stabilized things, and that's a good sign towards progress. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0147.
This is entering into a cooperation agreement with Clark Summit Borough. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby enter into cooperation agreement with the Borough of Clark Summit and does hereby award the Community Development Block Grant Construction Contract for the Clark Summit Hillside Park Senior Center Parking Lot Paving Project to American Asphalt out of Shaver Town. The lowest and most responsible bidder at $69,875. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 18, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Kristin Magnata.
Thanks, Chief. Good morning, Commissioners. The project is coordinated in cooperation with the Borough of Clark Summit, which is the local jurisdiction overseeing the senior center. Clark Summit Borough officials identified an urgent need for parking lot and access road improvements at the Hillside Park Senior Center. The legislation, as was stated, authorizes the county to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Clark Summit to execute the project and award a construction contract to American Asphalt in the amount of $69,875. This project is timely. It must be completed by 9/25/25 this year in September, and as always, CDBG projects are no cost to the county.
Great. Any questions for Director Magnata? Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0148.
This is ratifying the Community Development Block Grant modifications and revisions. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby ratifying submissions of modifications and revisions to the Community Development Block Grant Program to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development on behalf of Clark Summit, Dixon City, and Jessup Boroughs for federal fiscal years 2020, '21, '22, and '23. In Clark Summit Borough for federal fiscal year 2021, housing rehabilitation funds will be reallocated to public community facilities for Lakeside Pavilion Senior Handicap Improvements, receiving a revised allocation of $72,636. For fiscal year '22, housing rehabilitation funds will be reduced from $87,613 to $81,712, and $5,901 will be reallocated to the Lakeside Pavilion Senior Handicap Improvements under Public Community Facilities. In Dixon City Borough for federal fiscal year 2020, we'll reduce the budget for the completed Crystal Park ADA Walkway and reallocate the balance of the $45,681 to the proposed Bernard Zaminsky ADA Trail and Accessibility Project. And reallocate the housing rehabilitation funds by $36,226.80 to the proposed Bernard Zaminsky ADA Trail and Accessibility Project. Total funding for the proposed project is now at $78,907.80. In Jessup Borough for federal fiscal year 2023, First Time Home Buyers Program funds will be reallocated to public community facilities for upgrades of the Sarah Brady Park, now receiving a total revised allocation of $40,678. Be it further resolved, the county has complied with the terms of Pennsylvania Act 179, has met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above-mentioned modifications. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 18, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Magnata.
This legislation ratifies a series of formal modifications and reallocations to existing CDBG programs submitted to PA DCD for federal fiscal years '20, '21, '22, and '23. These reallocations affect three boroughs, as was stated by the chief, Clark Summit, Dixon City, and Jessup, and involve a transfer of funds from previously approved activities to new or revised infrastructure projects. Again, these are timely. The Dixon City Project and Clark Summit Project must be completed by September 25 of this year, and the Jessup Project will need to be completed by mid-spring of '26, and as always, CDBG projects are no cost to the county.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Director Magnata? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0149.
This is authorizing the filing of a grant application. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby authorize the filing of a Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources grant application for a Lackawanna County comprehensive ATV feasibility study. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 18, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Magnata.
Thank you. This resolution needs to be amended to include two official signatures. In a previous administration, it just included one signature. So DCNR, who gave us the $125,000 two-year contract for this ATV study, is requesting for there to be a minimum of two signatures to be able to move forward with this grant. Our consultants should have the final ATV study by the end of the third quarter or beginning of fourth quarter of this year.
Great. Any questions for Director Magnata? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you very much. Resolution 25-0150.
This is entering into a contract amendment. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into a contract amendment between the Office of Youth and Family Services and the Children's Advocacy Center for fiscal year '24 through '25. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 18, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of the Office of Youth and Family Services, Ms. Carrie Browning.
Hi, good morning. This is a contract amendment to increase the do-not-exceed amount from $230,000 to $285,000 for forensic interviews that the Children's Advocacy Center completes for us. The number of our child abuse referrals has drastically increased during the fiscal year '24, '25, so that's why we're asking for this amendment, and the reimbursement rate is 80% by the state.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Browning? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0151.
This is approving professional service contracts. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into a professional service contracts for fiscal year '25 through '26 between the Office of Youth and Family Services and the following providers as per attached. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 18, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Browning.
Hi. So the Keystone Family Alliance is a new contract that will provide support to current foster parents and help to recruit new agency foster parents. The United Neighborhood Center's Prosper contract is a new contract. The Prosper program has been proven effective for delaying initiation and reducing substance use, reducing aggressive behaviors, reducing depression, and increasing academic achievement. Outreach, crisis, rapid response, family group decision-making, family team conferences were all part of one contract with Outreach last fiscal year under the title "Family Engagement." This year, the decision was to create three separate contracts to better align with the agency's funding. The remainder of the contracts are all annual renewals, and all of the professional contracts are reimbursed 80% by the state. So if the provider bills the maximum amount, the county's share will be $547,886.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Browning? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0152.
Providing, approving provider contracts. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the provider contracts for fiscal year '25 through '26 between the Office of Youth and Family Services and the following providers as per attached. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 18, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Browning.
So the Adoption Connection, Children's Home of Easton, Children's Service Center of Wyoming Valley, City Mission Living Stones, Compassion Living, Families United Network, Family Care, Institute for Human Resources, Jewish Family Service of Greater Harrisburg, National Mentor Net Centers, New Life Adolescents, PA Child, and Salvation Army are all annual renewal of foster care provider contracts, which are needed to maintain the purchased foster care options for the county. The rate that we're charged is normally determined by the needs of the child, and foster care is reimbursed at 80% by the state. The drug and alcohol rehabilitation and drug and alcohol treatment services are both annual renewal contracts for providers for delinquent children that offer residential and drug and alcohol therapy. The rate depends on the service that is needed, and these services are 60 to 80% reimbursed by the state. George Junior Outside-In School of Experiential Education, the Bradley Center, White Deer Run are all annual renewal contracts for providers for dependent and delinquent children that offer residential services. Again, the rate depends on the service that is needed, and these are reimbursed at 60% by the state. And Fostering Success Residential Care Program and Taylor and Taylor Group Home are all new contracts for dependent and delinquent children who are difficult to place and need a group home placement. The rate we're charged depends on the needs of the child, and these services are reimbursed at 80% by the state.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Browning? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0153.
This is approving detention center contracts. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into detention center contracts for fiscal year '25 through '26 between the Office of Youth and Family Services and Jefferson County Juvenile Court. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 18, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Browning.
Jefferson County Juvenile Court is an annual contract renewal for detention with a per diem rate of $225. There is also a contract addendum for youthful offenders from Jefferson County Juvenile Court. This is an annual contract renewal to house juveniles who are charged as adults under the Pennsylvania Direct File Statute. That per diem rate is $300.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Browning? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution, thank you very much, Resolution 25-0154.
This is entering into an agreement with the Scranton School District. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with the Scranton School District and the Northeastern Pennsylvania Philharmonic for the use of the auditorium for rehearsal for the Scrantastic Spectacular. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 18, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Marie McGuigan.
Morning, everyone. This contract allows us to have a space, which is required for the Philharmonic to rehearse before the concert that evening, and also, in case it does rain, which we all hope it won't, we will be able to hold the concert in the high school.
Great. Any questions for Director McGuigan? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0155.
This is ratifying the submission of a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program grant for the North Pocono Trail Development Phase Two. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby ratify the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the GTR grant program for the continued development of the North Pocono Trail in Elmhurst Township in the amount of $250,000. Be it further resolved, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign all documents and accept any awards, if approved, related to the GTR grant program. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 18, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Paul Bechtel.
Good morning. This is an opportunity to talk a little bit about the ongoing progress at the North Pocono Trail system. First of all, the first phase is basically finished with construction. We were out with planning, and we looked at the final site inspection. So the trail from the Twin Bridges up through Old State Road near the Wyandotte should be done very soon. We also held a Trail Preview and Trail Cleanup Day in honor of Joan Foitek from the North Pocono region a couple weeks ago. So the next phase of this, in trying to keep the momentum going in the North Pocono section, is the submission of this GTRP grant in the amount of $250,000, and it's going to try to extend the trail from where it currently ends at the trailhead on Old State Road up toward the Elmhurst Reservoir and avoiding the dangerous crossing of 435. We are using the match from the replacement of the GC Smith Bridge that the county's doing as our match for it, so it won't cost any additional money for this application. We also have our county engineer working on a centerline profile for the trail connection from Elmhurst Reservoir all the way up along 590 with the goal of connecting up toward the trailhead at Yednak Lane so we can get into the North Pocono Trail system. So this is all part of the continuous process. So Phase One completed, Phase Two will hopefully be this if it's funded. We applied for it in 2024. We did not get it, but this will be another opportunity, hopefully, for this year.
That's great. Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Bechtel? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0156.
This is an appointment to the Workforce Development Board. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following person to the Workforce Development Board with the term to commence July 1, 2025, and continue through June 30, 2028. Ms. Maureen Brennan, the Finance Manager of Crew Systems Corporation, she's a representative of the business sector. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 18, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the Board. Good morning.
I have two corrections. Lorraine Cummings, O'Farrell. When I was here, rating was AAA+. That's what I left at. That's five years ago. Second correction. The court did not issue an order to force reassessment. That didn't happen. The reason that reassessment was done was because some kind of deal was made that they wouldn't force that if these previous administrations voted for reassessment. Just wanted to make note of that. Last meeting was in Clark Summit. I wanted to be there because, again, I see we are spending money, again, on reassessment. $300,000 for the employees? $25,000 apiece, 12?
$24,000 apiece, and there's 12 of them, yeah. We're required to do that.
Well, you're required to do it for reassessment purposes.
Correct.
Which is yet another cost which, what I said, is coming to fruition, because reassessment costs keep going up and up and up, as I knew they would. And I see a lot of signs around for, as I said, lawyers and real estate agents making a lot of money off of reassessment. a lot of money off of reassessment. Do we have to pay for those people as employees for their benefits?
There are no benefits.
Because of Obamacare?
No.
There's a ruling that states that if you work thirty hours or more, that's the new Obamacare, ACA rule, that if they work so many hours within that quarter, that you have to pay for their benefits. Do they fall under that category? Because if they're a temporary employee, the temporary employees, also known as short-term employees, are defined as those who are hired for a specific project or work that has clearly defined end date, usually less than twelve months, and they're eligible for benefits. So if you could check into that, because I can see Donnie shaking his head, so I don't know, but if HR is here, maybe they can answer that question. Because that'd just be another cost to the, to us as county taxpayers.
Yeah, Commissioners, they're not entitled.
Stop that clock, twenty-nine seconds.
They're not employees, they're appointed officials, so.
So, next, on reassessment costs. I see we're renting some space from the mall. How much is that now? Let's see. Thirty-seven hundred monthly. Is that what we ended up with, option B? So thirty-seven hundred monthly in all utilities. More costs to the county for reassessment that we didn't have before. And I hope that the Scranton Times adds all this up and gives us a total like they did with the lawyers that Shapiro cost us for all the employees. I hope you'd add that all up. Reassessment is the gift that keeps on taking, as it always will be. I know that you had both said that you did not support reassessment, or you weren't here for it, but you can end it, and there was no court order. Just confirming that. Donnie, is that a confirmation?
No, actually, there is a court order.
Oh, there is a court order? Did they decide on it?
Yes.
Can I have the date on that? I'll look into it, but that's okay.
There is a court order, yes.
All right, I'll look into it if I'm wrong. And then, uh, the credit rating has just come down again, and I've been still waiting for my answer from Mr. Bolzoni. Is he still here? Mr. Bolzoni. Our fire hazard here that you claimed we had.
Excuse me.
That the unions and everybody didn't do their job.
Just address your comments to the board, if you could.
Sorry.
That's okay.
That we didn't have our sprinklers hooked up, which is interesting, because that means that our inspections weren't completely done correctly when we purchased this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Bob Bowles, Scranton. What I have here today, I'm going to give a couple things here, and I'm going to give this to your chief here. This is an abstract. The primary focus is the rehabilitation and restoration of function of first responders or people, military or otherwise, that create PTSD. And I'm looking to put a clinic here in Lackawanna County. I brought this up at the city council last night. We have major issues. PTSD affects everybody, not just our men, military, or other first responders, people that are involved here. And we have a reset therapy. I'm involved with a Dr. George Lindertfeld. I've had him here at the General Merly, and I flew him up here, and we went over this. It's a program that we need to help our people with PTSD, and nobody's doing a damn thing about it in this county or anywhere else. And I'm proposing to use the former church I have, Holy Cross Church, as a clinic and establish a program for PTSD. And I'm asking the county to get involved in this and support it. It's for the betterment of all our people, whether it's a housewife, a police officer, fireman, or anybody else that experiences the tragedy and it triggers PTSD. And I'm going to leave this with you. You could understand it. You'll need copies, one for both you and Commissioner Chermack. What went on here, I brought up about the queer flag over here at City Hall that I want down. I brought it here. We had a hearing. The judge dismissed it, Nealon dismissed it without prejudice. I don't have to ask permission again. Your attorney seems to be misunderstood or understanding the fact that was dismissed without prejudice, and I could refile it anytime I wanted to. And I've refiled it. They've been served, as you all well know. We're not going to allow any of these flags. They don't belong here. It's against the law, and I quoted the law, and he didn't understand what the law was. It's very clear and right to the point. Those flags cannot be on a government building, period. And I'm moving to have them removed. The lawsuit that you're involved in, Mr. Gahan, has been moving along. We're going to court. Again, your counsel here said, oh, you couldn't be sued. You're a commissioner. I sued you individually, not as a commissioner. No more than you stood out Saturday and said, I'm not a commissioner. And you spoke out against the President of the United States with all those other people there, all supporting what went on. And I consider prior military, that's an act of being a traitor to the government, to our President of the United States. Because if he says to the military, you march, you march today, period, whether you're going harm's way or not. And when you standing out there going on and on, and I have my tractor trailer there, the Bob Bowles Tours and Truckers for America and Trump. That trailer just came back after four months of all over the United States, delivering goods, medical supplies to California, North Carolina, Georgia, Florida, Kentucky, Tennessee. What the hell has anybody else done here? And I'm criticized every day by you and the others. Show me what you've done for the people in this country. And you stood out there, I consider as traitors to our democracy, on that bullhorn and saying, ignore that truck or ignore those people. No, you don't ignore us. Just because we're Republicans, we're not Democrats, and we're not against the government of the United States. But if anybody was full-fledged, you were all for Bill, Joe Biden, you named the street after him, and you did all this. But you didn't condemn him when he pardoned his kid for being a criminal and everybody else. So, you know, let's consider where we're going. You know, you're worried about kings. What I got here, and I'm going to leave you a copy of it, is the portions under U.S. President's statistics. And you'll see where Clinton was the highest one deporting people. And you stood there, ice belongings here, and the illegals gotta go. My grandparents were all immigrants, came to this United States. But one thing you don't get through your damn head is they came here legally. And you sit up there on your bullhorn, wanting illegals to stay in this country. You should be ashamed of yourself. In fact, don't even represent us as the commissioner of Lackawanna County anymore, because as far as I'm concerned, you're a damn traitor to this country.
Thank you. Have a great day. Would anyone else like to address the board? Yeah?
Michelle Tierney, Glenburn Township. Mister Bowles? PTSDs. I'm having them now. I'm having them now.
Okay, just please, no comments from the audience.
I'm having them now. This is a public forum. We have five minutes to speak. I think it's important for all of us to understand respect, courtesy. You have a right to your opinion, but if you have anything negative to say about someone personally, I think it's upon you to speak to that person individually and quietly. We are in a very difficult time in our country. And conversations like I just heard are one of the reasons why we are here, having this anxiety. There was a rally in Scranton. Unfortunately, I was not able to be here. I was out of town. I was in Washington, D.C. at a wedding. Everyone in our country, to date, has an opportunity to peacefully protest and say their words, whether or not you are a public official, a public official, or a community member. It is important for all of us to have man's humanity to man. We are all equal. Tomorrow, we get to celebrate the opportunity for our culture to be equal. I am almost ashamed to be here today, to hear these five minutes that I just heard. I love Scranton. I grew up here. My parents grew up here. My grandparents came from Italy. We are human beings. We have to start to work together. We have a President of the United States. We have to respect that. We have people that have different views. We have to respect those. So I ask you in the future for these meetings, because these meetings are very important for us Lackawanna County residents. Let's show some respect at these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Ma'am?
I always come with my joyous news in between everything. Just here for a few reminders, I'm Jennifer Mercer, Penn State Extension, and I'm just here to remind you that today at four is our Pollinator Garden Ceremony at the Gateway Building, and I think you've been invited, and we hope you can attend if you're free. And then, just an update on one of our programs. We have a webinar series that I thought might be of interest to some of your county employees, as well as your residents. We have a program called Kinship Family Forum, and it's a virtual monthly gathering designed to help kinship caregivers. That's when children are being raised by their extended family members. So I was happy to see Carrie Browning in the audience today. The webinars cover child development, legal rights, navigating the foster care system, mental health, and internet safety. There is no charge to participants, but registration is required. And there is one this evening. I'm not sure if registration is full, but our very own Dean Troy Ott will be speaking at that tonight. And the next one will be held on July sixteenth at seven P.M. Participants can register at extension.psu.edu, and you can type Kinship Cafe in the search bar. And I do want to add, Penn State Extension always strives to make your county as good as it can with all of our programs. I hope that we do that. Thank you so much.
Great job. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Paul Bechtel with Parks and Rec. I just thought it would be a good opportunity to highlight some of the activities in the parks. We're doing a lot of things internally, trying to make the parks better, but the parks are really a venue and a vessel for the communities to be involved, and they're using our parks in a lot of unique ways that are important to, for nonprofits and charities, as well as heritage and culture. So I just wanted to highlight that St. Joe's Festival is basically starting tonight. It's a summer kickoff at McDade Park from four to seven. That's been happening for several years, and it's a good event. And also, the Indian population in Scranton met me last week, and they're going to be having a kite-flying festival up at McDade Park on Saturday, July twelfth. And I'll be trying to, I'll get in touch with some of the neighbors, because the only potential issue is the kites that may drift off into the neighbors. We'll have something set up to help get the kites out of any trees or anything. But I think they're both really important events, and I'll try to come more often to highlight the activities that the community uses our park system for. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Sir? Sure.
I just wanted to thank Commissioner Chermack for helping us get the United States Army flag flown at the courthouse for its two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday. And it was the Army's two-hundred-and-fifty birthday. It wasn't Trump's, you know? He may have hijacked it, but otherwise, it was the Army's birthday. And I just wanted to thank Commissioner Chermack for helping us out here. And I remind everybody that I served for twenty-two years, and I served for everybody. So I'd like to see a little more common ground amongst our community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? No? You sure? Okay. Commissioner Chermack?
Thanks, Chris, for coming today. Appreciate you leading us in the pledge, and thank you for your service. And I was happy to be there on the seventh to put the flag up. Matter of fact, it's still flying, so we have to get that back to you. Other than that, let's just hope for peace in the Middle East, and everybody have a great day.
Thank you very much. I just want to mention a couple things. So the first is the, and you probably read this in the newspaper, but I want to acknowledge it at the meeting. The Lackawanna County Treatment Court recently celebrated twenty-five years with over one thousand graduates of the program, and I had the honor of being in attendance at that ceremony. And this program, which aims to help drug offenders overcome addiction and lead productive lives in society, was started, as most people know, by Judge Michael Berice in two thousand. I want to congratulate him and thank him for his efforts in doing something, really, that was kind of revolutionary at the time. Also, thank all of the people who work in the Treatment Court, who really do amazing work every single day. And if we're talking about the county finances, this Treatment Court has actually saved the county millions and millions and millions of dollars throughout the years. So thank them for all their work. I also wanted to mention that Commissioner Chermack and I have been kind of bouncing around the county at the Coffee with the Commissioners session. So we've been, we've met with the Down Valley Musical Forge and Taylor. We've been up in Carbondale, in the Up Valley, and we were also in the Abingtons. Meeting with all of the local elected officials. We did this last year. It was really successful. We're doing it again this year, and it's really great to hear from all these people and all the great work that they do. And also, we've been having these meetings in our library buildings throughout the county, and it's highlighted, I think, for us, the fact that we have a really, really great public library system. One of the events that is coming up this weekend is the Bucktown Music Fest. So this is up in Dunmore, at the Dunmore Corners. You can go online and check out the schedule. We're also posting this on our social media page, but there's a lot of great bands. So it'll be Sunday, June twenty-second, June twenty-ninth, July sixth, July twentieth, August third, August seventeenth, and September seventh. And this is their fifth anniversary, so there's a lot of cool stuff for families and children. The county will be closed tomorrow for the Juneteenth holiday, and our next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Wednesday, July second, at ten A.M. We're taking it on the road at the Blakely Borough Building, fourteen-thirty-nine Main Street in Peckville. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.